Hello there.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
Mark Davis. I think your mic's on. Down the left corner. Says unmute.
I'm impressed.
There you go. See? I'm not... It's a pretty face, Davis. I didn't know we were-
Good evening, everybody.
I didn't know we were supposed to get dressed up tonight.
Satoris- Volume up a little bit.
You sleeping?
Yeah.
You sleeping that suit and tie?
You want to see my jeans?
Alright, that's better. I was thinking-
You want to see my dress pants?
Oh, I don't want to see your underwear, Al.
Pair of shorts, baby. Just a pair of, you know, a pair of Nikes.
Alright. Al, what do you got on? Alright, that's good.
I was thinking about Pots Grove wear. Can't go wrong.
My wife wants me to have-
Mr. Parker?
Here tonight. This is her masked pet.
What is that? What is that?
It's a, it's a bear with a mask on.
Ah.
Ah, I got you now. Covid.
What are we waiting for? The committee meeting to break up? Oh, there's Bill Shirk.
Yeah, the meeting's over.
Gary, can I take the sport coat off?
No, you look better in. You're the best dressed one in the whole meeting.
Lori, are we gonna have the agenda on the screen?
Yep, working on that now.
Okay, now just, I'm probably patient. Try to get my book to prop up my thing and- No, you can't. You have to lift it up. Bill, I'm having an argument with Pat about how to set the computer up.
Better listen to her.
Bill appreciates that because he's met Pat on a number of occasions.
You better listen to her then.
Yeah, they're gonna mute me.
Come on, Mark, let's meet your wife.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is Robert Lindgren speaking. I'm sorry I'm a little bit late. After the last meeting, I had my son restart the computer and found out I was able to start the video. So here we are. Ready to start the meeting. I think we've got quite a lot of folks in attendance. We have 27 panelists, 29 attendees, for a total of 56 folks on the line. And I think we're just about ready to get going, so I guess we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I was gonna get the flag going there. Alright? Pledge allegiance to the-
To the flag.
States of America. To the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God.
Justice for all. Thank you. Alright. So moving ahead, we'll just go to our agenda. And can be held very ably by Lori, and she's gonna be doing the agenda here tonight for us. And so actually, we're gonna go with the roll call. I had the, everybody that was here in the, in the attendance, but we're gonna go ahead and do a roll call, if you wouldn't mind, to see who else is here. We would just do the roll call. By voice.
Do you want me to do the roll call? Or do you want everyone just to call out who's here?
How about I do it and then you just note who's, who answers up?
That's fine. That works.
Alright, we'll just do it by name, and obviously you're here and you're first on the list, so, Ms. Grimm. Hearing nothing from Patty and Scott, he had to go to his class, so Jim Lappick.
I am here.
Very good, thank you. Al Leach.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Obviously, I'm here. Tina McIntyre.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Nippert.
Here.
And Mr. Parker. Oh, this is the last meeting. He's gotta be here.
I did see Mr. Parker's in the meeting, Mr. Lindgren.
So did I as well. He's just having trouble with his mute button again.
And we're working on, Mrs. Grimm is working her way in.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Parker has not joined yet.
Alright. Well. Tell you what, that does give us an opportunity for one or two housekeeping things, I think, at this time.
Bob, can I just ask real quick? Usually it, the, the minutes state who else was in attendance. Meaning administrators, all that stuff. So, I mean, I don't have to write that down, but is that something Lori's gonna take care of?
Actually, the only thing we have to do is if, if there's any public comment or actually under the sunshine law, public testimony, we have to identify those people. Otherwise, you don't have to identify anybody else in the room.
Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Custer, we will, we will identify that because we do know who's here in the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. So for all of you who are watching and listening, you, as you can tell, this is kind of new territory. We're just trying all to get through this together as best we can. It's one thing to run one of these meetings, it's another thing to try and do it in, in conformance with all the correct sunshine laws and to do it in a way that's as efficient as it can be and as, as orderly as it can be as well. And to get everybody on the same page and doing things as well as we can do. So. I'll wait for... Hopefully the, the other two will join us pretty quickly. We do have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead. We're gonna press on. We will make an announcement. Let's go ahead to the executive session announcement. On the agenda. We did have a virtual executive session on Wednesday, the March the 20th, March the 25th, and we discussed personnel litigation and safety. So that was our first virtual experience, and it was rather extensive in terms of ti- uh, time, a lot of, a very long one. Um, so now we're gonna move into public comment. Public comment, we understand that it's been quite some time since we've had a meeting. It's been a month. Normally, we have these, these meetings every two weeks. And public comment, normally the first public comment of the meeting is dedicated to items on the agenda. Uh, we know there's some kind of, uh, comment discussion that's out there. People are anxious to, to speak and address the board. What we'd like to do is to mention that we're interested in hearing what people have to say, what people want to talk to us about, and to get your comments and to take them. What we'd like to do is much, we have, as you can see, many of our principals, many of our administrators are here tonight. And what we, what we don't want to, what we don't want to do is to try and get into a regular sort of a dialogue like we might have ordinarily if we were sitting in the same room talking with one another. We do have town halls at each of our buildings. Each of our building principals does have a town hall that is more sort of conducive for that sort of dialogue and back and forth that we have regularly. And those announcements are posted regularly, and Dr. Shirk can talk about that in just a minute, about how those are, those are posted on a routine basis, and those are maybe more conducive for that sort of thing. But what we would like to do is sort of take your questions tonight that are not necessarily on the agenda and at least hear what your questions are and take them down and, and maybe be able to consider them and respond to them after consideration and thought. Because sort of doing things on the fly where we, the board, don't get to consider them and, and think about them, and we can't, can, uh, talk to and look at and discuss things with the administration, doesn't lend itself well to giving you thoughtful and considered responses, which is really what we're trying to do. We're trying to represent the administration and ourselves well, frankly. And, you know, when we're all in separate places and not looking at each other, not talking to each other, this isn't that. So we will take all of your questions. We will answer the questions. We may not answer you tonight. And we may, you know, tell you, here's who's going to answer your question, and they will get back to you, just probably not tonight unless it's a fairly simple and straightforward question. So with that all having been said, if there are, are questions at this time, if anybody would like to have any questions on the agenda or any other questions that you'd like to pose.
If I might, it's not only questions, it's really more the time for public comment. People may have comments. I don't want them to misunderstand. This is-
Understood, thank you.
Their comment.
Mr. Lindgren, Dr. Shirk's here. Just, just wanted to clarify during this public comment phase, do you want to stay just to the agenda and then wait till the end for some, some general questions? Or would you like me to feed that in?
It, it would have been my preference, ideally, to stay just to the agenda at this time. But the other side of the coin is that I know that a lot of people have a lot of anxiety during this time, and a lot of people have been waiting and they're, they're, they might be very, very anxious, recognizing that if folks really can't wait till the end and they really have a burning question that they'd like to ask, I'm not gonna tell them no. How about that? You know, if they really have a question they want to ask, let's just go ahead and let them, let's go ahead and let them ask that question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. The, the, one of the burning questions is just from some of our audience tonight, and it comes from, you know, our, our senior class, and that is graduation. And, you know, we've, we've, we've as administration have discussed this piece at length, and I've discussed this with Mr. Lindgren at length, at length too. And what I can say to all the seniors at this point is that our goal is to, is to have a graduation that, that is something that has traditional to Pots Grove. And right now, we are not prepared to make a statement on graduation because our world has cha- it changes daily and weekly. And the first hurdle that I want to get over is the April 30th hurdle. And that hurdle really was set by our governor and, and the CDC, and it's based on restrictions, these restriction requirements that we all have regarding distancing. So what I don't want to do is make a knee-jerk decision in April, April 14th, about what could happen June 10th. So what we are going to do moving forward is I'm gonna be meeting with Dr. Ziegler and, and his high school team next week, and we're gonna start putting together some scenarios regarding graduation. And, you know, we're gonna have a scenario like we always, we're gonna have graduation at the field on, on, on the 10th, or if it rains, we're gonna be in the gym. And then we'll move out from there. We'll move out to, if it has to be virtual because of the regulations that are put upon us. Or do we need to look even further out into the summer? But our goal is to keep our focus on finishing the senior year for the class of 2020 on the best possible note that we can. Your high school staff is committed to that, your teachers, your administration, we as a district are, but we just don't have all those answers right now to give to you. So I, I don't want to paint a picture that I can't, I can't promise. But what I can say to you is, we're go- we're working on it. We do have you in mind. We know how important it is to you and your families. And we're gonna do our best to see this through. And our hope is, as we meet next week, is to get these pieces together by early May. Because after Ju- after April 30th, we'll know more from our, our state government and our local government about what we can do regarding that piece on, you know, restrictions, restriction requirement based on social distancing. Because at this point, we're not in a position to break any rules. That, that is not our position. And we do recognize it, and we're gonna continue to work on it and know that we're gonna do the best we can. Mr. Lindgren?
I really don't want to be redundant. But the, the fact of the matter is that right now, we're just stuck with a lot of no's. We, we don't have information. We don't have a lot of things we can tell you at all. All we can tell you is what we can't tell you, and that is that we don't know when the restrictions are going to be left or lifted. We can't tell you if we're going, if we're going to be able to have graduation on time. Our first preference, I think I can, I think I can safely say, our first preference for all of us on the board, for all of us in the administration, for all of us, our first preference is to have graduation as normal on Penny Packer Field and everybody walking across the stage on the day the graduation is set. That is our first preference. Failing that in climate weather is to have it inside in the gymnasium. That's our first preference. That, that's, that's what we want. Everything else is a far distant second to that. Now, you know, the, the, when we talk about, well, the virtual thing or backing it up or moving it back a couple of weeks, all of that, we can't really say what makes sense because when, when you say moving it back, do you know if the governor's going to let us move it back a week, two weeks, three weeks, a month? I don't know, and nobody else does either. So we can't talk about moving it back. We can't talk about sliding it this way, sliding it that way, because nobody has that answer. So you can't make a plan based on that. We have to wait for more information. We're stuck waiting for more information. What we can do right now is, is basically tell you that we're, we're going to do that thing. We're going to wait and plan on as if we're moving forward with the normal graduation. As we've stuck with the calendar so far, we've got a motion to do a, move one little thing that we're gonna talk about shortly, but other than that, we're going to try and make the experience for everybody, our students, our teachers, our parents, everybody, as normal as it can be. And we're gonna try and make it as fulfilling as it can be for everyone, understanding that this is not a normal year and this is not the usual thing. We're all flexing. We're all trying to make the best of what we've got. So there we are without trying to be redundant.
Can I just say one thing?
Questions, yeah.
You know, there's no way this is gonna be a traditional- You getting feedback? There's no way this is gonna be a traditional graduation. Well, I can't say no way, but it's very unlikely that this will be a traditional graduation, but this will be the most memorable, memorable graduation for everybody involved. I don't remember who spoke at my high school graduation. I don't remember much about it at all because it was just like everybody else's graduation. This is gonna be something that will never be forgotten. It will be talked about for years. So while it stinks that every senior, college senior, high school senior across the country is being stuck in sort of a yucky situation, at the same time, it's something that is gonna be making history and you'll be talking about for years to come. So, you know, there's a bright side to everything. And I know that the, the administrators and the board and everybody involved is gonna make sure that this is as memorable and wonderful as it possibly can be.
Thank you, Mrs. Custer. Uh, Dr. Shirk, again, I just wanted to add a few, a few more points. We are going to work on contingency dates. And one thing I don't want Pots Grove community and our students to compare ourselves with what's going on in other districts because I sit in super dense stadiums across Montgomery County almost every day. And, um, they are all over the place, to be honest. And no one has made any decisions that are engraved in stone yet. But what I can share with you is that we will continue to look at contingency dates as far out as we need be until we can figure out what's best for our community. So I know it's a tough, a tough piece, but know that your teachers and your administrators and your district office and your school board support you in making sure that this can be a memorable, you know, piece of your career. It's just gonna take time. It's just gonna take some patience, and I know that's running thin a lot of, with all of us, but it's a growing experience that will come out better and stronger at the end. And you'll, you'll figure this out down the road when this, when this day comes up and you talk about it at your five and 10 and 15 and 20 year reunion. But Rust is sure, we are looking at contingency plans and dates, and we'll continue to inform you as those things unfold, and that will be in the next two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, just a question? Please. Uh, just a quick question, because obviously this is the first meeting we've had as a full board under this Zoom thing. Are we going to allow people to make comment or just usually use this question and answer as going forward for our public comment section? I'm just not exactly sure if I'm supposed to be looking at the question and answers or if we're also gonna have somebody do public comment as well. I don't know how this is gonna work. I just wanna figure, we figured out now, we get it to go forward until we're done doing these.
The, okay, the, the way this was supposed to work is that this was supposed to be public comment on the agenda. That was, that was the ideal. Understanding, though, that this was the first meeting we've had in a month, and there were going to be lots of questions. I, I assumed there were going to be a lot of questions about graduation in particular and maybe online learning and some other things. We expected that there would be a few questions about that. And rather than not address the elephant in the room, I thought it would be good to let people get their questions out, ask the questions here, rather than just stick to the straight agenda, so that we could at, at least address them, right? We'll give the, give folks the opportunity to ask the questions and answer them. And normally, though, this is just a regular board meeting where we have that, that discussion, uh, the discussion of the agenda. The, the time for public comment and new business is normally at the end of the meeting where we have the, the public comment at the end of the meeting. That's when people sort of have more of a free discussion at the end. So, no, this isn't gonna be the normal thing. This is just because it's been so long since we've had anything. It's the first one that we're doing online. It's the first one. It's weird and just trying to recognize all of those peculiarities of this particular meeting, just trying to make accommodation for everybody adjusting to the new situation. Alright.
So, so Mr. Lindgren?
Yes.
Dr. Shirk, I, I just, for this, for this meeting, I think Al's question was, yes, the public would like, and I've had a few, a few people ask the question. If people want to comment, we want them to do it through the questions and answer period during this meeting. Is that versus, versus, we're, we're not gonna open it up at this piece, that all their public comments can be made through the Q and A, and we will, we will take their questions accordingly, either now, which we're, which we are doing, or when we get to the public comment for-
I'm sorry, yes, yes. We would like people to submit their questions through the Q and A throughout the meeting, and then we can, we can take the agenda questions now, and then we can, during the meeting, they can continue to ask questions. And then at the end, when we get to the public comment section, we can take other non-agenda questions at the end of the meeting and sort through those and just deal with all of those questions at the end of the meeting. Does that make sense? And is that what you understood as well?
Yeah, yes, sir, and thank you. And, and I will say that as the questions come, we will get to as many as we possibly can. And if we don't, we have your name, and we will make sure that you get your question answered.
Right. Exactly. The idea is to get everybody's questions answered. And again, we do understand everybody taking their time and, you know, listening to and watching the, the meeting. And we want to get everybody's comments, and we want to answer everybody's questions, but we want to do it in a thoughtful way and in a thorough way and not sort of off the cuff and not without having our full discussions. Because as you can imagine, doing it without being able to look- Because as you can imagine, doing it without being able to look at each other and again have a, you know, a, a well-considered thing. It's, working from home is great in many aspects, but in other aspects, it's, it does leave you a little bit, um, at ends, at a little bit of, of loose ends when you're trying to come up with quite the right answer and quite the right thing, and everything's not quite at your fingertips. And so you might leave something out, you might say something a little bit wrong. And so there's sometimes you just have to look things up and maybe give an answer not right at the, in the moment, and you have to look it up. So that's why we're not going to always give you the answer right here in the minute of the meeting. Um, and maybe we'll be posting it afterwards. So that's why we're doing it that way, and not because of any disrespect meant. Alright? So that's where we are. With that, I, I think we're caught up, I think, on the questions that I see in the Q and A and the chat and everything else. Um, does anybody else see anything that I'm missing?
No, sir, we're ready to move on.
If not, then I think I'd like to move to action item, I'm sorry, I'd like to move to 4.1. So go ahead, please, Dr. Shirk.
Thank you, Mr. Langren. The administration would like to recommend a temporary, temporary board policy suspension 006, procedures, the meetings, um, as necessary to allow virtual and/or electronic participation during the term of the governor's statewide shutdown due to the coronavirus, COVID-19. The move.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Leach. Do we have a second from anybody?
Second.
A second.
We have a second from, sorry, Ashley got in before you. It's a little bit easier actually to do it this way. We have a, we have a motion, Mr. Leach, and a second from Ashley Custer. And what we're going to do is we're just going to take a voice vote, um, to see, are there any questions on this motion? Three, two, one. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed say no, and if, say, and say your name. Okay. Uh, motion passes without objection.
Is everybody on now, other than Scott?
Um, I'm sorry, I haven't seen, I've not seen Patty. And I have not seen, there's Tina.
I don't see Patty on the list.
Yeah, I don't see Patty.
Okay.
Patty was just promoted to the panelist, so she's there now.
There she is. Welcome, Patty. Alright, Dr. Shirk, we're ready for the next.
The recommendation is to give the school board minutes for March 10th as presented.
The move.
Second.
Wasn't quite fast enough on that one. I think it was Patty. Um, motion from Patty and a second from Dr. Nipper. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, that sounds good. Alright, uh, all those opposed, say no and state your name. Hearing none. Motion passes without objection.
I move that we
I move that we
we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second.
Motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mr. Leach to accept the accounts for audit as presented. Uh, are there any questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no and state your name. Hearing none. Motion passes without objection.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $6,943.24.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mr. Leach for the granting of the orders in the amount of $6.9 million and all the rest. Uh, are there any questions on the granting of the orders? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no and state your name. The order without objection.
I move that we approve the treasures report for March 2020 as presented and file them for audit.
Second.
Good motion again from Mrs. Grimm and a second again from Mr. Leach to file the treasure report as presented and file it for audit. Are there any questions on the treasures report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. All those opposed, say no, and if so, state your name. The order without objection.
Okay, moving on to the student board report. I'd like to turn it over to Brianna Mayberry and Junior Madison Palmer.
Alright, thank you guys for having us. Um, below I have there listed, I sent an email to Dorenzo within the past week just stating how I felt posture has been doing and personally how I was doing. Um, my mom's an intensive care unit nurse at University of Penn, so I found that very hard, and she is dealing with all those patients. But, um, all my teachers specifically have been super supportive, so kudos to them. They have been super flexible with my learning and definitely have been getting a lot out of it. And I'm definitely super appreciative of everything that they've done for me. They've definitely been my supporters through all this time that we've been through.
I'm right there with Madison. Um, my teachers have been great. Online learning has certainly been an adjustment for all of us. Um, and I know some students are struggling, not necessarily with the new learning environment, just emotionally. Um, we're missing out on a lot where, you know, this is not how we expected our year to go, that's for sure. Um, but I think the schools are doing the best that they can given the situation. And I think that students are adapting as well as they could be expected to.
Thank you both for your comments. Much appreciated. Moving on to action items for personnel. Uh, due, due to our circumstances with COVID-19, what we're asking at this point is something we always ask the board to do for us. Uh, just give us, give us, uh, over, over, you know, the summertime. Uh, but because of, of, of the way things are today, we're asking the board to grant us the hiring authority as submitted. And of course, everything if we're in a lab, we can just combine it, combine it all.
Yes.
I'd like to keep out, uh, the first one, 10.1.
10.1, I'll do tempo by 10.2. No move on 10.1.
Okay, we have a motion on 10.1. Do we have a second on 10.1?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Al and a second by Patty on 10.1. Uh, do we have any questions on 10.1?
Uh, I have a question. Are we thinking we're not going to be meeting twice a month during this? Uh, if not, I don't, you know, we're still having our meetings via Zoom. I'm not sure the, uh, the necessity of, of this, since we're still be meeting.
Mr. Parker, we will still be meeting. It just, it just gives us another tool as, as an administrative team. Um, we would, we would follow the same procedures. Uh, actually, we put this on, we put this on the agenda about two weeks ago, where we didn't really know what kind of status we would have. So, um, you know, I, I, it was my decision to keep it because we're going to ask for the same, the same, the same thing again in June, and if need be. A lot, a lot of times, Mr. Parker, it's substitutes or long-term subs, different pieces. That'll help us just get, get boots on the ground quicker. If, if I can, if I can move it along and then come back to you for approval. Anything major, of course, we're not, everything will go through the board with, with those particular pieces.
Al, you're eating.
Any, look.
I do.
Any, any follow-up on the questions? No. Okay, there's no follow-up on the questions. All those in favor of approving the administration's request for authority to appoint qualified personnel to vacant positions during the time of the closure to the COVID-19 pandemic, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no and state your name.
No, Bill.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. With one no. Next item?
Like 10.2, combine 10.2 to 10.4?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to combine 10.2 to 10.4, professional staff, support staff. Uh, 10.2, 10.4 is from Al and a second by Patty for all of those three to be combined into one motion. Uh, does anybody have any questions on 10.2 to 10.4? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no and state your name. Hearing none, so order without objection. Very good, thank you.
Moving on to action items for business.
I'll make a motion to combine 11.1 to 11.7.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Patty Grimm to combine 11.1 and 11.2, 11.7. Um, does anybody have any questions on those seven items? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. All those opposed, say no and state your name, please. So order without objection. 39 to second 12, education.
I'll make a motion to combine 12.1 to 12.9.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to combine 12.1 and, uh, to 12.9 from Mr. Parker and a second from Patty Grimm. So all those in, uh, I'm sorry, are there any questions on 12.1 to 12.9?
Only question I have is, obviously, this is going to be contingent on, for this summer, for the overnight trip, for the camp wing for girls, and the, the other, I think there's the soccer team, oh no, the cross-country team and the football team. It's just contingent on the government saying that everything's A-OK for the summer, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Leach.
Alright, good to go.
Are there any other questions?
Some of these may have already been, uh, either canceled or already executed. Uh, the ones that have been canceled, do we need to even act on them?
Dr. Nipper, they're all 2021 and 22.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, I read the wrong one. Yeah. I stand corrected. I thought they were all 2020.
Yeah, so we're good. So, very good. Hearing no other questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. And all those opposed, say no and state your name, please. Very good, that's section 12. So moving on to section three, or 13, rather, policies.
Yes, uh, approval of the policies. We're asking the board to approve the policies as submitted.
The move.
Second.
Second.
Oh, that was a race. Alright. We had, we had a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second. I saw Al Leach get in there first, though. That's what I saw. Anybody see anything different? No, okay. So, we had a motion and a second from Mrs. Grimm and Al Leach for 13.1, the approval of the policies. Uh, does anybody have any questions on those? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, say no and state your name, please. Hearing none. Motion passes without objection.
Okay.
And an update to the JOC.
Yes, hello, everybody. Um, we did have a Zoom meeting. Um, everybody was in attendance. Um, the sad news, all the NOCTI tests, uh, testing has been canceled for the year. Um, again, it's just really sad for all these students, as are students, to have this, um, and, and their year this way. Um, the applications are still coming in. I don't have the numbers right with me, but, um, but it was a very, um, quick meeting. And, um, any questions? And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm. Uh, moving on to 15. The Policy Committee held their meeting on February 25th. We're asking, uh, the board to accept the minutes from that meeting.
The move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mr. Leach to approve the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting from, uh, February 25th. Does anybody have any questions on those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no and state your name, please. So order without objection.
Moving on to 15.2, the Operations and Facilities Committee meeting. Uh, we're asking that committee to please report on the March 10th meeting.
Well, March 10th meeting is largely overcome by events at this stage. Um, but what we talked about, uh, we had another of our series of meetings where we talked about the different, um, budget areas. We talked about the human resources budget that we were planning at that time for the 2021 school year. Dr. Harney presented the human resources budget. And we talked about buying the Safe Schools online training software that would replace another piece of software that we had. The additional cost was about, going to be about $5,500. Um, Mr. Bicker presented the Technology Department budget for the 2021 school year. Uh, that was going to be an increase of about 7% over the current year, uh, which represented about $85,000. Um, increase of a new, uh, virtual storage system. That was going to be a four-year lease of $40,000. Crowd, right, uh, crowd strike software of $20,000, other software increases. Um, Mr. Caldwell presented the Facilities Department budget for 2021. That was actually a savings of .75%, uh, which we were pains to point out. And, uh, we, we did take note of that, we appreciated that as well. Um, and that represents a, a budget that has been decreasing annually for the last several years. Mr. Linky presented the information regarding contracted services and tuition, uh, that had been included. And they were projected to be down approximately $260,000 from the 2019, 2020 budgeted amounts. And that was continued to be monitored. Um, Mr. Nestor then finished out the presentation with, uh, information
Mr. Nestor then finished out the presentation with information from PASBO, which was the school business officials, that compares increases in charter school tuition and that pension costs and how that compared to education subsidies over the past eight years and noted the discrepancies therein. And as I mentioned, this was all kind of overcome by events that followed immediately thereafter. We had another Facilities Committee meeting tonight, immediately prior to this meeting, where we were talking about what's going to happen next. And the picture was not very pleasant. We'll be talking about that in more detail as the year progresses. So, that was the readout from the meeting from last month.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. And then that takes us down to new business. And if I may, Mr. Lindgren, I could jump in first. One of the things that I'd like to make a recommendation tonight and for the board, and this really just came up this week, over the weekend I gave some. And I'd like the board to consider it tonight, moving forward. We have a scheduled Professional Development Day scheduled for April 28th. And prior to that, that was a primary election date, and our students would have been out of school. But based on our change in the way our educational platform, what I'd like to recommend tonight to the board is to take that 28th day for professional development for our teachers and move that to Friday, May 1st. That will allow us to have four days of continuous learning for our students. And then that will allow us to, give us a few more days that we need for support. We're in a process. I spoke today to Dr. Harney and Mr. Boris regarding some plans for that particular day that I think will be very important to us, not only for the rest of the school year, but we're starting to take a look at the fall as well and how we play catch-up with our students who missed this fourth quarter. So, I'm asking the board to, tonight, to, I need someone to make a motion to please have that Professional Development Day on the 28th of April moved to Friday, May 1st.
Would you like me to make the motion, Dr. Sherk?
I will, yes, please.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we move the Professional Development Day from April 28th to 20th to Friday, May 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, our reliable team of Mrs. Grimm and Mr. Leach have once again made the motion and seconded the motion for the movement of the Professional Development Day from April 28th to May the 1st. We have continuous, we don't have a break, basically, in our education week of that week. So, very good. Does anybody have any questions on the movement of the date and what it means?
Yeah, question, comment? I mean, it's kind of silly because we're all quarantined anyway, so I don't think it's going to affect anybody. But how could this, could there be any negative impact on any families that had planned on this day being off? I can't imagine, but I just thought I would put that out there.
Sure. Mr. Parker, that's always a possibility. And I guess I'm going to go with your second assumption, because I do believe that since we are in a, you know, restricted, restricted for social distancing rules, that I feel that what it allows really to give the kids four days and then, and I don't mean it'll, Friday will be like a break day for the kids. So, it'll end up being a three-day weekend for them, and that's how I was looking at it. And then it gives us a couple more days for us to plan our professional development with our team.
I would just ask then that if some crazy thing happens, it would be considerate with attendance if a family can't be there that day, for the student to be excused if it's legitimate. But I can't imagine that's going to happen too much, but.
We would definitely do that, Mr. Parker.
The only question I have is, is this our last, you have the calendar in front of me. Is this our last of the training days and such like that for the rest of the year? Or are we going to just work on those going forward?
I'm sorry, Mr. Leach, did you say, and I just didn't quite hear you. Is this the last of our Professional Development Days? Is that your question? Yeah, this is it. This is our last one of the year, correct? Not hearing any other questions? All right. No other questions on that motion? So, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no and state your name. So ordered without objection. Are there any other items of new business?
I just had a question. I was just curious. I heard today the Boer Town School District has scheduled their prom for July. Have we put any thought into how we can work something out for the kids, for the seniors?
Well, yes.
Activities?
Yeah, we're in a process of, Dr. Ziger and I have spoken, we speak every week regarding these types of things, regarding the prom and graduation. And we're going to continue to look at contingency plans, you know, as we move forward. We just didn't want to make a decision in April that might not be a realistic choice. So, we're going to be meeting with some of those pieces regarding contingency dates, not only for the prom, but for graduation, moving forward.
Thank you.
No question, just a comment. I wanted to say thank you very much to all the teachers and administrators, what you guys are going through. The fact that I don't hear people from the community putting, I'm seeing Facebook pages saying that there's an issue. The fact that I've heard from both our student reps saying how things are going so well. I just have to commend all the teachers, in fact, are not only working on their students and such for their curriculum, but also probably taking care of their own kids at home and such like that. So, for all those, I just want to make sure that the entire, myself, and obviously, I'm hoping that everybody on the board agrees, that we want to say thank you very much for all the work you've done.
Well said, Al.
Yeah. Very true. The teachers and the administration have done an outstanding job, especially converting from face-to-face meetings to what, to a virtual type of environment. They deserve an awful lot of credit, and the administration's done one awful lot of work in the last month.
Very, very true. Very true. Thanks very much. All right. So, that about wraps us up for new business. Dr. Sherk, did you have anything else you wanted to share? Public comment? Yes, I just really, you know, just wanted to, you know, thank, I mean, we've worked together for a month, but I just want the, I want the Pottsgrove community to know that the teachers, the building administrators, the directors, the supervisors, the superintendent's office, the HR department, everybody has pulled together in a way that you would want us to pull together in a time of crisis and need. So, I couldn't be more prouder of the people that I work with and what they've done in the last month of making sure that our neediest learners are taken care of, our highest learners are taken care of, and the needs of our children are being met. We still are learning, still be patient with us. We're still looking to help people out with devices. We're still helping, we're looking to help people out with Wi-Fi hotspots. And we'll continue to work, continue to reach out to your building principals so that they are the point of contact, and then they will get your answers needed. They will farm that out to the directors and get you the assistance that you will need to continue down this path. But I wanted to thank everybody again in public, and also a special thanks, and this is sort of funny, and some of you, I mean, I want to thank my wife, because she said to me, she always wanted to work with me. And now the last month, she gets to work with me. And I really appreciate her camaraderie and, you know, her good humor about all this. And most of all, really, most of all, her support. So, you know, on a lighter note, I really appreciate that piece. And again, thank you to the board. You've done a good job being patient with us and allows us to do the things we need to do. And we will continue to do the best and move this thing forward and finish the year on a good note, not only for our seniors, but for all of our students. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren.
Bob, if I can just add to that real quick, an extra shout-out to Chartwell's staff. They've done an amazing job, unbelievably flexible. Typically, they're there every Sunday, all day, preparing, I don't know, what is it, 12,000 meals? I mentioned they were there all day today, getting ready for the distribution tomorrow. So, to them, thank you, thank you, thank you. Gary over at West and Dave over at Lower, too. Great job to them.
Yeah. Let's just go around the horn. I'm just going to give everybody an opportunity to speak real quick before we get to the public comment and then the inevitable adjournment. So, just going to go around the horn real quick. Mrs. Custer, do you have anything you wanted to say before we close out?
Just a thank you to everybody who's pulled together through all of this. And, you know, I, from where I sit, it seems like it was sort of a seamless transition. I'm sure it wasn't. Not having a child in the system anymore. You know, I don't see everything up close, but from the food distribution to the online learning, it really seems like it's gone very well. And I know there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen right now, but y'all seem to be working pretty well together. So, better than all the cooks in my kitchen, let's put it that way. That's not working out too well.
Mrs. Grimm?
Well, I'd like to piggyback on everybody. I mean, coming together, I always knew we have a beautiful school district, and I've always been proud to be a part of it, but coming through such an unknown, uncharted territory, Pottsgrove shines. You know, it always has and always will. And I just feel for mothers and dads, like my daughter, who's trying to work from home, and she has the kids running around and trying to do the schoolwork, and the patience that they have learned is amazing. On a side note, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. My family has been hit by this virus badly in New Jersey, and my dad has been hospitalized. I hope the ventilator comes off soon. My sister and her husband are suffering with this virus. So, not being able to be back home in Jersey is tough. But I do believe the power of prayer, and we will get through this. And this is, we will get through this. This will pass. So, I thank you for the time.
Well, prayers up for your family, Patty.
Thank you.
About to with you. Jim?
Pretty much mimicking everyone else. I really appreciate everything that everyone's done. I've seen with all four of my kids, a lot of interaction with the teachers and as fair amount with their pairs as well. Obviously, they're missing their friends, but they are all moving forward and growing as best as they can. So, I'm pleased for that and all the effort by the district. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, Jim. Al?
He's eating.
Very good, okay. Tina?
Again, as everyone said, just thanking the leadership for being flexible at this time and families for coming together. And these are uncharted waters, and everyone is pulling together the best they can. It's just, it's very encouraging to kind of observe that and to see how everyone's working together. And thank you, Patty, for sharing so that we know how to pray for your family.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Nipper?
Yeah, just, again, our wishes go to Patty and to the Pottsgrove team. You've gone through what I can only compare to trying to build a house in the middle of a hurricane. And it's, yeah, that's an awful job. And I think we're going to emerge stronger because of it. And we're going to emerge better off because of what we're going through. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And Mr. Parker, please.
Just a comment to the community, families and others that might be listening to, please, if you have any needs, any needs at all that aren't being met academically, food-wise, emotionally, reach out to the school counselors, they're there for you, the social workers, teachers, administrators, and of course, any of us on the board, for yourselves or anyone you might know in the community. Please let us know.
So, I'll just add my thoughts, just basically similar to what everybody else has said, and that is that this has been an amazing opportunity to see the community pull together. We're all going through very difficult times. All of us, you know, the job situation, the social situation, staying in the homes and spending time. I've seen, you know, we thank you, first of all, to the administration and the staff for all the work that you all have done. But it's been amazing to see all of the work, all of the people pulling together and getting those meals pulled together, and everybody who's been there to distribute those meals and all the work that Chartwell's has done to prepare those meals, and everybody who's volunteered to hand them out. And it's been something terrific for our community, to be a part of that, to work together and say, look, we're all in this together, and we're helping each other. And I can't thank our building principals enough for all the work they're doing, supporting their teachers and their staff and the decisions that we as a board have taken to try and support as many of the folks as we can. We're going to pull through this thing together. And we're trying to make decisions that are responsible for everyone, all the way through, the taxpayers, for the staff, for the administration, for everybody, to make the very best that we can. And as I mentioned, we looked at the Facilities Committee earlier. We looked at what are some of the financial impacts, and we know that this is a brutal, brutal thing for the district and for all of our taxpayers and for all of our families, the families, the businesses, our friends, our neighbors. But what I have seen is hope. We have seen our children, who are, as children always are, they're looking at this and they're making the best of it. I see the kids helping each other, and they're studying, and they're doing the things that the kids always do. They make the best of it. They're doing their homework, they're going about their business, they're picking their plans, and they're thinking about their things and moving on. And when I look at and I heard the report from our two student reps, what was their take on it? Their take was, do try and keep that French teacher for themselves? No, for the kids that are coming behind them. That's the hope. That's the hope. Okay, they're not thinking about themselves, but thinking about the kids behind them. How can you not? How can you not be proud of these kids? How can you not be proud of them? How can you want to do everything you possibly can to take care of them? That's all I can say, I can't do better than that. So, with that, we'll just see what we can do about our public comment and what we can do. Dr. Sherk, are there anything there that we need to address? Yes, yes. Just a.
Just a, just a thing, so the, one of the questions was about this, the last day of school for seniors. I'm going to be working again, that's one of the things I'm going to be working with Dr. Ziegler about, what that last, last week or so. So, that, that will be coming up shortly as well. Question.
Question.
Or graduation, and please understand that we will continue to look at contingency plans within the next coming weeks, and we, we have the best interest of the, the community in mind with that. So, more, more will follow in the next week or so. And that, I think that pretty much wraps up the questions, Mr. Lindgren, that we've already have answered. You're muted, Mr. Lindgren.
Oops.
Alright, so I guess with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
移到
移到
We have a motion from Patty and a second from Mr. Lappick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it, and we're out.
Be safe, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
See you, see you.